Council meeting on Wednesday, July twenty-third, six P M. Meeting called to order. Madam Kirk, may I have roll call, please?
Yes, Marion.
Aye.
Vice Americano.
Present.
Councilor Gonzalez. Councilor Perez.
Here.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Kirk. Now, leading this invocation, our own city manager, Diego Vida Montes. Can you either bow your head or stand, whatever you choose to do?
Gracious God, as this council gathers to lead and make decisions on behalf of the McFarland community, we ask for your wisdom and guidance. Grant each member clarity of thought, a spirit of collaboration, and a heart of service. May their discussions be thoughtful, their actions just, and their decisions rooted in what's best for all who call McFarland home. Bless their work this evening and the path it sets for the future of the city. We ask this through Jesus Christ our Lord, amen.
Amen. Can everybody please stand for our pledge allegiance led by our public works director, Yurleese?
Nettie's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Outstanding work, Diego and Yurleese, I think we might find some positions for you. Chief would like that, right, chief? But thank you, thank you again. Now, let me see, how a motion to approve agenda has to form?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Americano, second by Councilmember Perez. Madam Kirk, may I have roll call, please?
Yes, Marion.
Aye.
Vice Americano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Kirk. Now, to one of the favorite items in our agendas that's led by our chief, our feature pet of the week. Chief Knox, please, is presenting.
I'm here, honorable city council. Today, we have Opal with us. She's a two-year-old pit mix, very friendly, very loving, would love to go on vacation with you if you want to take her. Yep, if you want to get her new shoes, she would love it. All her, she's up to date on her shots and spaying and neutering. So if we have any takers, we'll pay all the fees tonight.
Yes.
Sacramento, they need dogs in Sacramento, too. Well, Opal will be available at the animal shelter if anyone changes their mind.
All right, we got, we saw McGee looking at it, so. He stood up, that means he wants it. All right, thank you, chief. Now, we have presentations, introductions, awards. We have presentations by, from River Partners on Senate Bill five-five-six, Posel Creek flood, flood, uh, plane restoration. We have Julie Retner, she'll be coming up and presenting.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, honorable members. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I have some handouts for you that are just an annual report, kind of illustrating some of the work that my organization does. I'm the president of River Partners. River Partners is a nonprofit organization. Our mission is on the screen here is to create wildlife habitat for the benefit of people and the environment. And so I'm pleased to make this presentation each night about multi-benefit floodplain restoration and some work we've been doing to secure some funding to bring here to the Tulare Basin to help with some of our water challenges. And how do I advance?
You just let me know.
Just ask, okay, go ahead and go to the next one. All right. So I'm actually down from Yuba City. So when I think about the Central Valley, I think about it from Redding to Bakersfield. It's a pleasure to be with you. My organization, River Partners, mostly works in the Central Valley, a little bit in Southern California, out of offices all across this great valley. I like to start with a little bit of context setting around water issues for the valley by looking at this kind of what the state looked like in terms of wet habitats in the valley, you know, around the eighteen-eighties, eighteen-nineties, and then today. Just to illustrate that we've done a lot of development in the Central Valley, and this has had effects on the way that water moves, both on the surface and below ground, as you all know, deeply aware of groundwater issues in the basin, but surface water issues as well. And so what this dramatic transformation has done is reduced some of our watershed's ability to hold water and also to safely pass floodwaters. So that's what I'm talking to you about today. Go ahead to the next one. Of course, we have really interesting watersheds today, much more interesting than they once were back in the eighteen-eighties. We've built so much infrastructure to move water all around that our watersheds hardly look like they used to, and that's okay. This, you know, amazing development has meant that the water that runs through the watersheds here, like Posel Creek and the White River, do a lot more than just support local groundwater supplies, local water storage, and local agriculture. Some of the water that that percolates through this complicated watershed supports millions of Californians, so it's very important from a statewide perspective that water here in the Tulare Basin is managed in a really effective and efficient way. Next slide. Of course, agriculture is the heart of our economy here. I really love to point out that from a river perspective, healthy rivers are the core of our agricultural economy here. And so it's important not just for flood safety and kind of water supply for people, but also water supply for our agricultural economy, that we do a really precise and multifaceted job thinking about what the future of water looks like in our watersheds and how we manage it well. Next slide. And of course, climate-driven floods, as we've experienced here and elsewhere in the valley, are increasing in intensity. What the warming atmosphere does is makes the precipitation that falls on the Sierras fall more as rain than as snow, which means that it rushes out faster out through all of our channels. And this can cause really devastating effects for communities, and I know that lots of your neighbors, as well as McFarland, have had some flooding issues. I did want to point out that the cover of the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan, which is a plan for the state, for the entire Central Valley, that's updated every five years, features multi-benefit floodplain restoration as a major component of how we think about the future of flood management across the Central Valley. Yeah, and then I just wanted to also mention that, and I'm sure you're all deeply familiar with this, but especially the Tulare Basin and the Central Valley writ large gets a lot less investment than other parts of California. Investment in parks, investment in water, investment in environmental quality and environmental health. So really excited to be working on some funding to the Tulare Basin for that reason as well. I have a couple of slides here just to show you what floodplain restoration looks like, since I can't take you on a tour, although I'd love to. If anybody here wants to go on a tour down to the River and Sea Restoration Project, I'd be delighted to host at any time. My organization, since nineteen ninety-eight, has restored about twenty thousand acres of floodplains through this multi-benefit floodplain restoration approach, thinking about the combination of conserving water beneath our feet, right, using nuisance floodwater to recharge our aquifers, but also sequestering carbon, returning wildlife habitat, creating parks and open spaces for people to enjoy and supporting our agricultural future. Nuisance floodwater, as you know, causes lots and lots of damage across the valley. And what a shame that we even have such a thing as nuisance floodwater. Water is an incredibly valuable asset for all of us. It drives our economy, and we simply don't have, you know, very effective ways to take that excess water when it is in excess and use it to great use, to put it to great use. Flood safety is a really important consideration for all of the communities of the valley, but especially around here. Next slide. So one more before and after, and I just want to point out the timeframe on this. So when we've been able to create these restored floodplains, which are really the primary floodplain of major rivers across the Central Valley that flood regularly every three to five years, the transformation can be quite quick. River Partners is a farming organization. We've worked in rural communities across the valley, and we use farming techniques to do this floodplain restoration. So we use berms and canals, just like farmers do, to manage water, and we use farming practices to recreate habitat when that's part of the plan. The results you can see in a matter of a few years. So what about McFarland? We're here to talk about McFarland. We're really excited that Senator Hurtado is advancing Senate Bill five-five-six, which is a funding bill for floodplain restoration specifically for the district, for the Tulare Basin. And McFarland, as you know, has flooding damages that derive from Posel Creek. So we believe, as we've looked at Posel Creek and the flooding challenges here with engineers and other partners, technical partners, that we can make some safe designated overflow areas that could protect this community from nuisance flooding while also recharging groundwater in a way that's deliverable in a few years' time, not water projects that take decades to deliver. We think that the environmental quality benefits of restoring some floodplains, especially on Posel Creek, could also be a major benefit to the community here. But successful floodplain restoration requires willing partners, you only work with willing partners, lots of technical experts, and of course, dedication to a complicated process. As many of you probably know, when you influence a creek or a stream, there's a huge amount of regulatory oversight, planning, and coordination that's required. So River Partners, as a nonprofit, we're prepared to act as a project proponent to try to deliver some floodplain restoration here that could benefit McFarland and reduce flood damages while increasing groundwater storage. But we would be a project proponent that would need strong partnership from the city, from the county, from the rest of the community, to make it work. So just a couple maps here to kind of orient and display, you know, where we are in the world. So as you know, Posel Creek comes out of the mountains and passes through under Highway ninety-nine and Famoso, and I believe that, you know, flooding from this creek, when it does overbank, kind of travels into McFarland on the east side of town. And there are some challenges with water quality with that water that comes into town, as well as the quantity itself. So finding strategic locations where we can allow safe overflow off of Posel Creek is an imminently doable solution if this funding bill is passed, which we're really excited, it has unanimous support so far at the legislature. Next one. And this is a same map, but with a different lens. This is if you can imagine looking into the ground, and the red and blue colors illustrate permeability of the soils and the subsurface to great depth. So blues are areas where water doesn't percolate into the ground very quickly, and red is areas where water does percolate into the ground very quickly. And so what we can see as we look at that same kind of alignment of Posel Creek as it moves through the communities in this area, that there's great opportunity for floodplain expansion to actually create groundwater storage and enhance groundwater conditions locally. So, and this is my last slide, and I'd love to take any questions that you all might have, but Senate Bill five-five-six is funding for this type of work. Currently, the bill was introduced by Senator Hurtado, and it's been approved unanimously in both Senate and Assembly committees over this summer. Lots and lots of great support coming from both sides of the aisle and from all legislators that we've talked to about it. The bill started at a forty-three million dollar allocation with four project areas identified in the bill, including Posel Creek, we hear from McFarland. As it's made its way through the process, it's been revised to be about a twenty-one and a half million dollar allocation without the specific project areas named. However, Posel Creek remains the highest priority for the senator's office and for our organization to continue working. The next steps on this bill is that if it is, as it advances through the budget process, it will go through appropriations and, you know, must be fully allocated as it's written. Once it's appropriated, or if it's appropriated, the funding will be administered through the state's Wildlife Conservation Board, which is a funding entity, a public agency under the Natural Resources Agency. That agency receives pre-approval, or pre-proposals on enrolling basis and then invites full proposals for projects, which work here in the community or nearby in Posel Creek would go through that process. The Wildlife Conservation Board approves funding in February, May, August, and November agendas and grant agreements about thirty days after that. So if this Senate bill makes it all the way through the appropriations process and then through this proposal process, we could be on the ground working with you all in the year twenty-twenty-six to get started on something that would help to alleviate flooding in the east side of town. So we're really excited at River Partners to continue working with the city and the mayor and all of you to shape a proposal for Posel Creek in the coming months in anticipation of that appropriation. So I'm delighted to take any questions you might have or hear any comments you might have about the Senate bill and/or the approach.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public if you have any questions, comments regarding this presentation.
It would, the funding would become available sometime in the calendar year twenty-twenty-six, which means project entitlement and permitting, things like that would have to happen, so maybe twenty-seven or twenty-eight.
And by doing that, would that help all the residents, or all the residents on the east side that are required to have draft insurance, would that eliminate that?
It's possible. It, as you know, flood insurance requirements have to go through a federal process, right? So as our project would shape up, we would get to answer that question in more detail. Yeah.
Any more, any more questions? The, just to, if this, once it gets to its final steps, just for thirty, it could be three to five years to be started, finished, completed, et cetera.
That's right.
So March would be another big day, but we've, through committee, everything's been passed unanimously. So, any other questions from the public? Okay, I'm going to close, coming back to the council. I'll start with Mr. Gutierrez, any questions, concerns?
No questions, but delighted to work with you, hopefully get this done soon.
Thank you.
Ms. Perez?
None, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I have no questions.
Julia, I have no questions. I prepared a little statement. I just want to thank you for the partnership with the state, Senator Hurtado, and I want to thank the, not only the committees from the Senate Assembly for continuing moving this forward. This is a situation that the city of McFarland has dealt with for close to thirty to forty years. And what it does is, is, I mean, I've explained it to obviously the state capital where it runs through a dairy that's fully operated, that water runs through all that affluent and all that waste, and it comes into our streets, our schools, and everything else on the east side. And this is something that needs to be addressed. I know the budget and everything else, it was brought down, but it's very important that we continue this fight. I've done that tour, I've seen what you've done in Sacramento, it's an excellent, and this is how to mitigate this problem, because the question by Mr. Gonzalez was very good, is, would it get us out of that floodplain where about, I don't know, maybe two thousand accounts are paying for flood insurance through a mortgage, and that's anywhere from twelve to sixteen hundred. Not only that, it's not allowing the city to grow economically on that side because we're on the floodplain. But there's other challenges, but I just want to thank you for coming out and doing this presentation and seeing that the city, working tirelessly, our council for supporting this, and obviously making those trips to Sacramento, getting this thing forward, push, and both, both sides of the aisle are unanimous on this, because, I mean, obviously, it's, you know, those words, environmentally hazard, I mean, through all that, and not only what's coming to the homes when this happens, so this year and every year, we're wondering if we're going to have a heavy rainstorm where Posel Creek can't handle it, or if it's going to be a cold year with a snowpack, and then on the weekend, it's very hot and the water comes gushing. So every year, we're worried about where we're going to relocate all these individuals. So it just kind of bothers me that for forty-something years, nobody's done anything about it. You know, this restoration plan is huge. Obviously, you know, the Central Valley, sometimes it's forgotten, but in this area, and if they would come out and actually see what occurs, not every year, but it potentially occurs, but I want to thank you for coming out all the way from Sacramento, and thank you for the assistance and with this bill and getting it pushed forward.
Of course, and thank you, mayor, for your great leadership in this. McFarland's not alone, there are other Central Valley towns that experience the same things. We've had the pleasure with working with several of them to find these solutions. So it's really exciting to be able to deliver solutions like this, but it requires leadership from all of you, so thank you for that.
No, thank you so much for coming, and if Mr. White's right there from the movie, I always try to get him to take a picture.
Fabulous, and I'm sorry I couldn't adopt the dog, he's adorable, but I'm not staying.
Are you sure? We'll hold him until you go back. We'll hold, we'll take care of him. He'll be fed and vaccinated, the whole works.
I love it, adorable, very good, very good. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of items in this staff's opinion are routine and uncontroversial. These items are approved in one motion unless council member or member of the public requests to remove a particular item. Is there anybody from the public that would like to remove and discuss a particular item in the consent agenda? Seeing none, is anybody from the council want to remove or discuss anything on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Americano, second by Councilmember Gutierrez. Madam Kirk, may I have roll call, please?
Marion.
Aye.
Vice Americano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Kirk. Now, moving on to public hearings, item number twelve, approval resolution twenty-twenty-five dash one-ten, a resolution in the city council, the city of McFarland, calling for the holding of a special municipal election to be held Tuesday, November fourth, twenty-twenty-five, a ballot measure to adopt an ordinance approving the transaction of a general tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, and requesting that the Board of Supervisors consolidate this election with the special municipal election held on the same date. Ms. Dela Cruz?
Good afternoon, honorable mayor and members of the city council. The item before you previously was approved by the city council on the July ninth meeting. However, it was discovered that a minor modification to the resolution is required to ensure that the city consolidates the special election with the current county board of supervisors. This update does not impact the city's ability to include the measure on the November fourth, twenty-twenty-five ballot, as there is still sufficient time to meet all required deadlines. No other changes were made to the resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions if the council or the public has regarding the modifications or provide an overview, overview once again of the proposed measure.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody have questions concerned, I'm going to open up public hearing? Okay, seeing none, closing public hearing at six-twenty-one, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Any questions, concerns regarding this resolution? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Motion by Vice Americano, second by Councilmember Perez. Madam Kirk, may I have roll?
Marion.
Aye.
Vice Americano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Kirk. Moving on to item thirteen, waive full reading and introduce ordinance six, twenty-twenty-five ordinance of the city council, the city of McFarland, adding sections twelve-point-zero-eight, point-two-ten to the, to McFarland Municipal Code relating to streets, Mr.?
Castillo.
Castillo. I was going to say Drake.
Good evening, honorable mayor. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. The improvement in long-term maintenance of our city's roads is a matter that sits at the top of our priority list. Recently, we have reconstructed roads such as Cliff Avenue, Fitz Street, and West Kern. To help preserve the integrity and safety of these newly reconstructed roads, the Public Works Department is proposing the adoption of a new section to chapter twelve-point-o-eight of Title Twelve of the Municipal Code. This new section will place a moratorium period of three years on all newly constructed or reconstructed roads, where no permits for excavations will be granted unless the work is being done under special circumstances. This change is intended to support the city's investment in its infrastructure and ensure the longevity and safety of its transportation network. And city staff recommends that we waive the full reading and city council approve the proposed adoption of a new section to chapter twelve-point-o-eight in regards to street excavation.
Okay, I'm going to open up to the public. Anybody have any questions, concerns regarding this item? I'm going to close it to the public, six-twenty-three, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Start with Ms. Perez, do you have any questions, concerns?
No.
Mr. Gutierrez?
No questions.
Vice Mayor?
No questions, just a comment, it's a good idea.
Mr. Castillo, good question, what do you mean by special circumstances? Just a prime example.
So in emergency cases or where, you know, the street need, there, an excavation needed to occur for an emergency, or there's no way around it, those would be the special circumstances where a permit would be granted to anyone who was conducting the work, but then we have resurfacing requirements that they would have to abide by to patch the street. That way, it's, it looks more uniform, and it's not just a bunch of patch jobs all in random spots.
Yeah, because we know streets aren't cheap.
They are not, they definitely are not.
Free wages, but we won't get into that right now. Okay, do we have a motion to waive and full reading and introduce the ordinance?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gutierrez, second by Councilmember Perez. Madam Kirk, may I have roll call?
Marion.
Aye.
Vice Americano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number fourteen, approval resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash one-oh-five resolution in the city council, the city of McFarland, approving the installation of two-stop signs at the intersection of Mast Avenue and Mission Street. Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Yurleese?
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. This resolution before you today stems from the recommendation to staff to hold a public hearing for the installation of two-stop signs at the intersection of Mast Avenue and Mission Street. These two-stop signs, if approved, will be installed in combination with the traffic calming measures that were presented at our last council meeting. Staff has posted notice of public hearing at various city facilities and along Mast Avenue. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash one-oh-five, and the city council conducted public hearing to receive input regarding the install of these two-stop signs.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody have questions, concerns regarding this item? Closing public, public hearing at six-twenty-five, I'm going to bring it back to council. We'll start with Councilmember Gutierrez.
None, I have no questions.
Councilmember Perez?
None, thank you.
Vice Americano?
No question.
No questions, Yurleese, just a comment, when would this be completed?
We're going to start the pavement markings here this upcoming week, and then we're still waiting for the materials for the traffic calming measures that we presented last council meeting. We should have the material by the end of next week.
Okay.
But we will start the pavement markings and any of the signs that we have readily available this week.
So you're figuring sometime by August when it should be done?
That's, that's the goal, is to try to get these implemented before school starts. I know we kind of have a tight timeline, but that's the goal.
Okay, good deal, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Americano, second by Councilmember Perez. Madam Kirk, may I have roll call?
Marion.
Aye.
Vice Americano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to administrative agenda, item number fifteen, approval resolution twenty-twenty-five dash one-oh-four, a resolution in the city council, the city of McFarland, accepting the lowest responsible, responsive and responsible base bid and bid option one, and award of the contract to sync out construction in the amount of three million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and ten cents for the base bid and the bid option one of the twenty-twenty-five street rehabilitation, various location projects, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. Allocate funds for this bid and up to six hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and ninety cents for contingency construction management and material sampling and testing. Woo, that was a long one. Thank you, Yurleese, go ahead.
Honorable mayor, city council members, the city of McFarland was awarded a six-million-dollar grant in federal funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. These funds were allocated for the rehabilitation of various streets. Motion. Second.
Motion by uh uh Councilmember Gutierrez, second by Councilmember Perez. Madam Clerk, may I roll call?
Maryon.
Aye.
Vice Maricano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number fourteen, approval resolution number twenty twenty five dash one oh five, resolution of the City Council of the City of McFarland approving the installation of two stop signs at the intersection of Mast Avenue and Mission Street. Mister Hernandez, Mister.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Uh, this resolution before you today stems from the recommendation to staff to hold a public hearing for the installation of two stop signs at the intersection of Mast Avenue and Mission Street. These two stop signs, if approved, will be installed in combination with the traffic calming measures that were presented at our last council meeting. Uh, staff has posted notice of public hearing at various local facility, city facilities and along Mast Avenue. Uh, therefore, staff is recommending approval of resolution number twenty twenty five dash one oh five and the City Council conducted public hearing to receive input regarding the install of these two stop signs.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anybody have questions, concerns regarding this item? Closing public uh public hearing at six twenty five. I'm gonna bring it back to council. We'll start with Councilmember Gutierrez.
I have no questions.
Councilmember Perez?
None, thank you.
Vice Maricano?
No question.
No questions, Yurlys, uh just a comment. Uh, when when would this uh be completed?
We're gonna start the pavement markings here the this upcoming week and then we're still waiting for the materials for the traffic calming uh measures that we presented last uh council meeting. Uh, we should have the material by the end of next week.
Okay.
But we we will start the pavement markings and and any of the signs that we have readily available uh this week.
So you're figuring sometime by August when it should be done?
That's that's the goal, is to try to get these implemented uh before school starts. I know we kinda have a tight timeline, but um that that's the goal.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Maricano, second by Councilmember Perez. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Maryon.
Aye.
Vice Maricano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to administrative agenda, item number fifteen, approval resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh four, a resolution of the City Council, the City of McFarland accepting the lowest responsible responsive and responsible base bid and bid option one and the award of the contract to Syncow Construction in the amount of three million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and ten cents for the base bid and the bid o- option one of the twenty twenty five street rehabilitation various location projects and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. Allocate funds for this bid and up to six hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and ninety cents for contingency construction management and material sampling and testing. Woo, that was a long one. Thank you, Yurlys. Go ahead.
Honorable Mayor, City Council members, uh the City of McFarland was awarded a six million dollar grant in federal funding through the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. These funds were allocated for the rehabilitation of various streets throughout the city. Uh, there is a map there. I know it's kinda small, hard to see, but I wanna just kinda go through uh the streets that are gonna be on that list for for this project. So um first street is A Street, Browning Road to Wiley. B Street, Industrial to Wiley. Third Street, uh West Sherwood Avenue to West Perkins. Third Street, Hale Lane to Frontage Road. Seventh Street, California Avenue to West Perkins Avenue. Robertson's Av- Robertson Avenue, Fifth Street to Second Street. Uh, Ninth Street, West Kern to West Perkins. Uh, Mount Arbor Street, East Sherwood to East Kern. East Kern Avenue, Industrial to San Pedro. Uh, San Juan Street, East Perkins Avenue to Glenwood Avenue. And we do have a couple of uh overpasses that we included on this project as a bid option one. The reason why we included it as a bid option one is cuz we weren't certain that we were gonna be able to do all these roads with the six million dollar grant, but after seeing the bid results, uh it did come under the six million, so we are including uh the bid alter, which includes the Sherwood overpass and also the Perkins overpass.
All right.
The scope of work includes uh retrofitting of curbs and gutters, installing sidewalks, cross gutters, curb ramps, uh three-inch grind and overlay with hot mixed asphalt and upgrade signs, striping and pavement markings. On July tenth, twenty twenty five, at two fifteen P M, sealed bids were open for this project. A total of three bids were received and opened by the Public Works Director. Uh, the following is a bid tabulation of the bids received. First bidder was Syncow Construction. They came in at a base bid of three million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Uh, with their bid option number one being at three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Second bidder we had was Bowman Asphalt. They came in at three million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. Their bid option number one was three hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. Uh, last bidder we had was Griffith Company. Their base bid was three million, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. And their bid option one came in at four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Staff has refu- reviewed and qualified the lowest responsible bidder, Syncow Construction, and the city is allowing sixty working days for the contractor to complete this project. So the total cost of construction, including the base bid, bid option one, contingency and construction management is a total of four million, three hundred and four thousand and six hundred and six hundred and seventy-two dollars. So four million, three hundred and four thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. Uh, there's no financial impact to the general fund as this cost will be covered completely by the grant received by the city. So with that, staff is recommending the City Council approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash one oh four, accepting the lowest responsible bidder, Syncow Construction, award the project and execute a construction agreement in the amount of three million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and ten cents, which includes the base bid, bid option one, for the street rehabilitation project. Additionally, staff recommends approval of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety cents for construction contingencies and three hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars for construction management and material testing and sampling. And with that, I'm open to any questions or comments you may have.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public. If they have any questions, concerns, if they live in one of those streets or happy, or they're gonna finally go over an overpass where they don't feel like they need a neck brace. That those overpasses haven't been touched, I think, maybe in forty, fifty, sixty years. I don't know, Roy, you're about that age, you know? So, uh, okay, I'm gonna bring it to council, see uh anybody from the public before I close it? Roy, you might wanna, you gotta come up. You're gonna be yelling from the, you gotta come up and introduce yourself again.
Roy Gonzalez, one fifty-nine, Ten Street. Hey, guys, I don't like telling my age. I've been here sixty-three years. Uh, this work that you guys are doing now, uh it I have never seen it. You know, you guys got a good team, a good leader, uh you know, uh and keep up the good work, you know, uh 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 you take my hat off to you guys. You know, McFarland's finally, you know, uh got their, you know, their act together and, you know, it took a long time and we got a lot of work ahead of you. Uh, continue doing it.
Thank you, Roy, for those kind words. Um, anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Gutierrez.
No, I'm just delighted that we have this grant money and we just need these road repairs. Thank you.
Councilmember Perez?
I'm excited about the overpasses.
Vice Maricano?
Do we have an estimated time ETA on that project?
Yes, so uh currently what the specs say is uh start of September second. Uh, we um if approved tonight, we have been in communication with our intent to award, if approved, uh with the contractor and they're uh more than willing to start early. Um, so we're we're moving up to pre-construction meeting and hopefully starting uh before the scheduled start date. So sometime, I'm 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 gonna assume sometime uh late August.
Awesome. Great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I I just wanna add that, um, you know, everybody thinks just applying for grants, everybody's gonna get a grant. Sometimes it's competitive and just having the 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 networking and communication and the feedback from both teams and our team and actually having people that know what they're doing certified and actually caring about their job. These grants have always been available. And they're a no match grant, but it just it just takes people that really know what they're doing, uh really take pride in their work. And that's why I'm always av- um applauding our staff because, you know, majority of time we'll get the blame or we might get the credit, but you know, oh, we won't get the the credit. We're not asking for the credit. We got a good team. We're not perfect. We still have our challenges, but we got a a good team now that is producing results. And I like saying all the time, every time we have a grant, when we get a grant, we deliver results. I mean, as you can tell, we got water, we got grants for our water. We have problems with our water. We fix that issue in record time. We have, we have grants for our roads. Our roads weren't addressed for thirty, forty years or whatever the fa- the whatever it was. I mean, and there was a lot of blame here. The funds weren't available, but what I'm trying to get at is you have individuals that know their job getting paid what they should, what they should get paid. They merit that that pay regardless of of what people say. This this team is is, we're headed to a better direction. Our city is gonna be thriving, you know. Our next, our next step is bring that ec- economic development so we can provide all these essential service for our residents. And that's where we're we're headed, but it's a lot of work, a lot of things with with these grants that come in. You gotta have conversation. Consist, I mean, I don't even wanna go ask how many com- how many phone calls you have to make and sometimes you have to hear two hours of something else bef- before you get to the point that you have to get to. And that's the sacrifice that we make doing this. And then giving it to the staff, say, hey, make this, make this work. Staff coming together, having a task, completing that task. As you can tell, we're, there's twelve cities in this county. And we're the, one of the lowest uh revenue for tax base because we don't have the commercial. So when you don't have that tax base, you can't provide those services, have the streets fixed, uh have other stuff. We're not, we're not delaying, we're not chapter. We don't have all those, all that funding and stuff like that, so we gotta work a lot harder to get these things done. And then by no ways am I knocking on those cities. They've done what they had to do to grow and expand, but anyways, good job, Yurlys, on your team. Diego, everything for continue, giving that feedback to Ladel's uh office and getting them in return and just working, collaborating with all these uh different elected officials and is bringing results to our community. So, thank you again. And with that, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Maricano, second by Councilmember Perez. Madam Clerk, may I roll call, please?
Maryon.
Aye.
Vice Maricano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, uh moving on to item sixteen, approval resolution twenty twenty five dash ninety-nine, a resolution of the City Council, the City of McFarland, approving the reconstructing of Water and Waste Water Division and creation of utilities operator classification series. Mister Yurlys?
Honorable Mayor, City Council members, uh before you today's resolution requests an approval to combine both the Water and the Waste Water Departments. Uh, historically, the City of McFarland has maintained separate operational structures for both Water and Waste Water Departments with distinct classifications for the respective operators. While this structure has provided clarity uh between departmental responsibilities, it has also led to staffing redundancies, limited cross-coverage and reduced operational flexibility. Our current op- our current structure operates as we have five positions for the Water Department and four positions for the Waste Water Department. Operationally speaking, there's not, there's no need to have that much staff allocated one hundred percent of the time. Uh, there are certain times when all the staff is needed uh for each respective departments, for example, during uh meter reading for the Water Department and also any potential emergencies at the uh Waste Water Plant. This new structure will allow us to be lean and agile, meaning uh we could run both departments efficiently and gives us the flexibility to move or allocate manpower to rapidly respond to those peak moments where all hands are needed. Also, with the recent approval of the Utilities Manager position, providing centralized leadership over both Water and Waste Water operations, the city would be positioned to improve coordination between the departments without merging them administratively. The Water and Waste Water Divisions will remain separate in terms of regulatory oversight and budget structure. However, the classifications for field personnel will be unified under a single series. The proposed restructuring will establish a new Utilities Operator one, two, and three classifications, replacing the separate Water and Waste Water Operator roles. Each level within the series will reflect progressively higher qualifications in terms of experience, certifications and responsibilities. The only exception to this change will be for the existing staff impacted by this transition, who will be granted a period of time to obtain the certifications required. The objectives of this classification uh restructuring include improving schedule and coverage across both operational areas, promoting efficiency while respecting departmental distinctions, supporting employee development through a defined advanced pathway, uh enhancing compliance by broadening the technical capabilities of our staff. So no, no job losses will occur here as a result of this transition. Uh, all current qualified employees will be reclassified into the appropriate Utilities Operator level based on their qualifications, certifications and duties. Uh, financial impact, there's no anticipated increase in personnel costs as a result of this action. Uh, reclassification will be made within the existing salary ranges and staffing allocations previously approved by council. Uh, by creating efficiencies through the consult consolidation of operations, the city anticipates a cost savings of seventy-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and six cents. As such, no budget adjustment is needed at this time. So with that, staff is recommending the City Council approve the classification restructuring of Water and Waste Water Operator positions into a unified Utility Operator, uh Series one, two and three. This action will not uh combine departments, but will create a consolidated job classification series to increase operational efficiency and staff flexibility. And with that, I'm open to any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, Yurlys. I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anybody have questions, concerns regarding this position? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna bring it back to council. I'll start with Councilmember Perez.
Uh, no, no questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
No questions.
Vice Maricano?
No question.
Uh, no questions, Yurlys, but whoever thought about this idea, Serena, Yurlys, Diego, uh excellent job. It's a cost savings of seventy-six thousand, maybe more. I know I'm getting, we get tired of signing these checks to outsourcing all this work and it's it's a, it's it's a good idea to obviously possibly cross uh cross terrain and have a succession plan, et cetera, et cetera. So um, this is, this is phenomenal if it, you know, if it works out, and I hope it does, but the cost savings are are good and having a person with that background and experience and skill set to basically deal with both.
Absolutely.
Outstanding work. And do that, with that, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by uh uh Councilmember Gutierrez, second by Councilmember Perez. Madam Clerk, may I roll call?
Maryon.
Aye.
Vice Maricano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to item number seventeen, approval resolution twenty twenty five dash one hundred, resolution of the City Council, the City of McFarland, approving the retention incentive payment plan and agreement for dispatch personnel. Ms. Serena McEwen, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. As we know, dispatchers play a vital role in the city's public safety operations, serving as the first line of communication during emergencies and providing essential support to law enforcement and emergency personnel. Maintaining a stable and experienced dispatch team is critical to ensure timely responses, operational continuity, continuity and public safety. The City of McFarland continues to face challenges in retaining qualified dispatchers due to high turnover, job-related stress and more competitive compensation offered by neighboring agencies. These vacancies lead to increased overtime costs, strain on existing staff and a higher risk of burnout. So to address these recruitment and retention issues, staff recommend the implementation of a dispatcher hiring incentive program. The proposed incentive totals to five thousand dollars per eligible hire distributed as follows. Twenty-five hundred after a successful completion of the probationary period, which is within six months of hire, and the twenty-five hundred dollars on the one-year anniversary date of hire of the initial payment contingent upon continued employment. The total cost of the incentive program will be funded through existing department salary savings, does not require an additional appropriation of at this time. Staff for, staff recommend approving this incentive structure, structure to help attract experienced candidates and encourage long-term retention, ultimately strengthening public safety services and reducing recruitment and training costs. And I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Ms. McEwen. I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anybody have questions, uh concerns regarding this uh retention incentive? Seeing none, uh I'm gonna bring it back to council. I'll start with Councilmember Gutierrez.
No, it sounds like a good idea. We need more qualified employees.
Councilmember Perez?
None, thank you.
Vice Maricano?
No question.
No, no questions, but uh Chief, uh Serena, I know it's, you guys have a difficult job trying to retain the dispatchers cuz we have neighboring cities that are competing for good dispatchers and and it's it's a vital job to have, especially when somebody's calling for an emergency. But great idea. This is, this is something that's needed, so we could keep good employees and not let them go elsewhere. But uh with that, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion?
Motion by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Gutierrez. Madam, Madam Clerk, may I roll call, please?
Yes. Maryon.
Aye.
Vice Maricano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now moving on to item number eighteen, review and discuss planning commission applications. Ms. De La Cruz.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. On June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, the term of one of the planning commissioners expired, resulting in a vacancy on the planning commission. In response, the City Clerk's office posted a notice in the application, sorry, uh notice in the application on the City of McFarland's website, inviting interested residents to apply. The application period was open from July tenth through the twenty-second. At the close of the application period, two applications were received. However, one applicant, Mandy Vega, recites outside of city limits and is and is therefore ineligible to serve. As a result, the only eligible application for the council consortium is that of Juan Mungia. The City Council may now review the submitted application and determine the appropriate next steps, which may include scheduling an interview, making appointment or reopening the application process to si- seek additional candidates.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Do uh, do I have any questions, concerns regarding this item or an application? I see Mr. Mungia. Mr. Mungia, would you like to come up and uh say anything?
Uh, my name is Juan Mungia, seven one three Misty Avenue. I'm just here to answer any questions if you guys have any questions.
Uh, question is, uh, Mr. Mungia, why do you uh wanna be part of the planning commission?
I was part of the planning commission just for a few months. Technically, um uh, the, well, the reason why I I I applied for the planning commission is because I wanna serve for the community. I wasn't able, I mean, in such a short time, I think I only attended a few meetings, so that's that's why I reapply for the position.
Okay, do I have any questions uh from our council? Start with Mr. Gutierrez. Any questions, comments, anyone?
No questions.
Miss Perez?
None, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No questions.
I mean, since, you know, we got some stuff coming up and we're discussing, he's the only applicant and he's got some experience. Um, I don't see a problem by making a motion to appoint tonight. Uh, so I'm making a motion to appoint. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by, by me, and second by uh Vice Maricano?
Uh, Maryon.
Aye.
Vice Maricano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Mungia.
Thank you.
I can tell you're a little nervous, but that's okay. We all been in the hot seat.
I I I'm not used to be on the podium, so that's why.
So, okay. All right, moving on to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council about any item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Speakers are limited for two minutes for each person, fifteen minutes total for one subject. Please state your name and address before, for the record, before making presentation. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody for public comment?
There are none.
There is none. Anybody that was late and wants to come up and discuss anything for public comment, this is your time. Uh, we like to uh in this city be very transparent, so it's live stream. I see none, okay? No council comments. Report from City Council on committee and special district meetings. Um, ob- obviously. Um, uh, obviously, uh, I'll, I'll start off with, last week I was in Sacramento. I would, uh, with, uh, supporting and testifying for several, uh, two bills. And actually went for S S, uh, SB five-five-six. Already made, uh. Julie was here with River Partners. We actually were successful in getting it moved forward. And just basically consistently, we, the staff and preparing the stuff and us delivering that message and making sure that the McFarland is. Res, uh, doesn't have a seat at the table, but is, is heard and then trying to find some funding for our city. So, that was one of the things. And also last week, I was, we came, coming back on Thursday, I had a Kern Cog meeting. Proud to share, I'm pro- I'm proud to share that our city was awarded funding through Kern Cog. Obviously through the C T C and making that combination with Mr. White and McFarland USA with, with uh, just bringing their team over here. And tho- these achievements reflect on our staff actually rolling up their sleeves, making that, that constant communication with Kern Cog. Uh, department that hasn't been done before and there's, I don't wanna say recycle grants, but there's grants that are there regardless of the amount. There, there's grants for that we should be awarded or actually challenged, but thank you staff for doing that. And getting, uh, some of our, I wanna say our sidewalks and I don't know if it was C Mac or other, other, um. Other grants that were awarded to us coming this year, including Kern and uh, West Perkins, uh, potentially falling if, if. Uh, Yearlis, you wanna address on that?
Yeah, so uh, we're currently applying for R S D P grant, uh, through Kern Cog and also got awarded a T D A Article Three grant. Which will replace, will be replacing quite a bit of sidewalk throughout the city.
No, thank you so much and it's, it's definitely, but see, this is what happens when you have qualified people doing that work. Not, not related to people, but anyways, I'll, I'll keep my comments to myself, but. We're gr- we're grateful for Kern Cog and our staff working together and continue this progress, cause every time I, I attend a meeting. Or Mr. Perez, our staff is like, hey, uh, your, your staff's already reached out to us. You don't have to ask us questions or put us, um. But I just, outstanding work, continue that relationship, build those relationships. It's very important. And from everybody in the department, the departments that are doing so, from Chief Megan, everybody that are getting funds for the city. We applaud you, we appreciate you, but thank you so much. And then with that, I'll leave, leave off with the, the Kern Cog and now Delano mosquito abatement, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So the uh, Kern County Public Health announced about a week ago now that there was a first human case of West Nile vi- virus. Delano mosquito abatement basically put out a, if you go onto our webs, our social media. Um, residents can, can protect themselves from mosquito bites by emptying and removing any containers around the yard, can hold stagnant water. Ensure window screens and door screens are free of damage, maintain swimming pools in working conditions, dress in long sleeve pants when outside during dawn and dusk. And wear EPA registered mosquito repellent when outside dur- during dawn and dusk. So, um, last week, can't remember what day, but last week, this, the mosquito department, Delano mosquito. Came out and fogged some of the area in, on the west side. And um, that was because there was a high uh, catching base of mosquitoes. And unfortunately, as fortunately as of now, we have not had any uh, West Nile, either mosquitoes or uh, human cases. But let's continue to be out there and protect ourselves from it. It is a very, it can be deadly or fatal, so uh, be very cautious out there. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, Vice Mayor. Now, moving on to council statements and reports on the own initiative council measures, and we make a brief announcement. Or a brief report on the own activities. In addition, council members may ask a question of staff or, or the public for clarification on any matter. Provide reference to staff on other resources for information. Alternatively, request staff to report to the city council of it. At a later mi- uh, meeting concerning any matter. Furthermore, the city council or any member thereof. May take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Gutierrez. Do you have any uh, council statements or reports?
No, nothing. Just happy to be here, still serving and glad that you guys are here. Congra- congratulations, Juan. Um, I'm just excited to keep on working with the city, with our department heads. I'm super excited about the roads. And then being partners, getting to work with the river partners. I am one of those few people that pay the flood insurance, fourteen hundred dollars a year. So, um, I'm ready to get that passed hopefully, but thanks for, everybody for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Uh, Councilmember Perez?
Uh, I just wanna thank uh, you, Mayor Mr. Arion, for all the hard work that you put in with our county officials and state officials. Especially with the Postal Creek. I wanna say that I lived on Fernwood Street, um. Uh, when the nineteen ninety-eight flood happened and I could not get to my house. Um, it was impossible to get over there. We had a, a fatality from a local, um, person here in McFarland, a very loved individual. Um, so we don't wanna see things like that happen again. And then uh, shortly after I moved to this side of town. Um, I was hit with insurance from FEMA, cause they considered it a flood, flood plain where I lived. But that was short-lived, um, thank God, because it was pretty expensive. Um, I'm excited to see the, the parking, I mean Kern Avenue and all the extra parking spaces there. It's looking really nice. Thank you, Yearlis. Um, and school just come back in session August fourth, so um. Let's, I'm, I'm excited about the, the street on ma- the renovations on, not renovations, but. The additions on mast of the stop signs. Um, and thank you everybody for your, your presence and um. Thank you directors and staff and my colleagues for all the great work that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Thank you for those kind words. Uh, Vice Maricano?
So much going on in today's meeting, but thank you Julie for coming out. Um, we had the opportunity when uh, the flood, last flood we had. Senator Rado and um, Assemblywoman Baines was out here and they got to see it firsthand, uh, the damages that, that that causes. And the effect on the community. Um, thank you everyone for their hard work, of course, um. The Streets Department, city managers, um, engineering, H R and community development. There's so many projects going on, I mean, to name them all, take us all night here, but of course, thank you mayor for all the work you do. I know that. It's not easy to get federal, local and state all put together to make sure we get put in that. In that list of cities, there's, like you said, there's so many, just here in Kern County, imagine the whole entire state, entire country. But great job, everybody. Thank you for all you do. Erica, thank you for always making sure we're ready to go in every meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I wanna thank everybody for attending today. I know the weather, uh, the temperature came down a little bit, so remember stay hydrated. Uh, wanna finish up with, I, I wanna thank all the department heads, too many to, to name and. Uh, I wanna thank, you know, everybody that, that helps out. We're, we're a good team. We, we don't do it by ourselves. I wanna thank the council for their support. Uh, it's easier to get a, get along with your council instead of having adversaries and stuff. And everybody's a, a team player and everybody's committed to McFarland. But I wanna just add this, I mean, obviously, not only our city staff, but our attorney, our litigation. Everybody that's here that, that's helping bring the city where it should be, but I wanna personally thank Diego, uh, our city manager, Vina Montes. That puts all the pieces together. Uh, he knows, I mean, it's non-stop calls from Saturday, I mean, from Sunday to Monday, six in the morning, six P M. I'm calling him and I know his, his wife probably gets upset, but I, but I, I appreciate his efforts and. It, it happens when we have a good team going, but I wanna, I appreciate all you guys for all the hard work. Sometimes our messaging is not a. I don't wanna say not acceptable, a little harsh, but it's just trying to get stuff done, but thank you again and um. We don't have no more um, items for this regular council meeting, so that ends our regular council meeting for today. Thank you everybody for coming. We're gonna be going into closed session after this, so thank you.